All right, we're gonna go over the rules quickly. Candidates are going to get three minutes to give an introductory remark. We did a coin toss just before this started, and I believe Miranda is gonna go first. Once that's completed, we will start with the question period. We had several questions submitted in advance. And Marco Horner is collecting questions. If anyone has a question that he'd like to ask. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question. Any candidate can reply for thirty seconds. The other candidates respond if they so choose. And then once we've gone through maybe about forty-five minutes of questions, each candidate will get a two-minute closing statement. So without any further ado, I'm gonna welcome up these candidates and welcome Miranda to give her three-minute introductory remarks.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody who came here. Good morning. I'm Miranda Turner, and I'm ready to serve on your school. So I'm just starting by saying why I'm running and talk about my priorities. Number one, instruction: If it's an APS, it can be more radical. It's for behind English students, it's to have the literacy challenges, even if they are moving through our secondary schools. Our special population of English learners and students with disabilities need a rigorous education on par with out of their peers. And it needs to be more of a challenge, more acceleration, more intensified classes out of APS. All of those together need to be our priority on the school board in terms of monitoring how we are doing on a regular, depending basis, setting appropriate benchmarks, and marking our progress. That's my number one priority. Number two, and probably my first, is our teachers. This year, we need to support our teachers more than ever. I would bring this year what creates a bit more generosity where our staff can be more, and I would eliminate an unfair holographic policy that favors our administrators over our teachers. Going forward, I want to focus on competitive benefits that we pay, raise debt currently, and making sure APS leads among our regional peers in teacher training. Third priority is the budget, which really drives one and two. I will make sure that one and two, students and teachers, are a priority in our budget. And I will raise oversight, fiscal responsibility during a time of increasingly challenging budgeting environments. And I would like to bring back independent audit functions. We will reduce our eight-hundred-million dollars in budget dollars by next year. So those are my local priorities, but I would give them as basic normal issues. We have our own two values here, and I think it's important to make sure that those are continued during this session. So APS, our policy for protecting trans students was passed, and voted on at the school in 2018 supported. And the APS should explore rigorous curriculum, including the Ethiopian American Studies Program, force studying in order to study real history. And I think that since we are talking about learning loss or more dollars for our schools to be closer to school divisions and not made in front of the outer students. So all of those are my priorities, local level and state level, and those are the things I stand for. One thing I need to say about myself. I am a Greenmount resident. I've lived in Arlington almost ten years. I'm involved in the city association on the executive board. I am involved in two PAs, two APS schools, and I need APS parents. I've also run through the board before, and new stats forge ongoing relationships with our elected officials, some of them are current and then, and Dr. Duran, I am ready to serve. I also think I would like to run more to the meeting on Wednesday that some of you may have noticed. We have submitted out bios of me about my work as a lawyer as well. I was introduced by Mike German and spoke to that, and feel free to think on us. Thank you.
Good morning, Arlington County Democrats. I am so glad to be here this morning. And if you come to Bus Boys and Poets in Sherlington on any given second Saturday, or in this case, third Saturday, you are in Kishiro country, and I'm glad to be on this on turf today. My name is Angelo Kishiro, and I am running for the Arlington County School Board this year 2023. The truth of the matter, folks, is we emerge from this pandemic. Our students and our schools are at the expense of multiple swelling prices. And the crisis ensued mental health, the teachers that are overworked, underpaid, burnt out, micro-bidged, and flat-out disrespected from the impending hunger clip, from the end of federal indemnification, expanded Medicaid, expanded food stamps, free school meals, and the Biden Harris child tax credit. As well as Arlington is on the run of ongoing and insidious attacks on trans youth and Black history by the MAGA governor we have in Richmond. We have a lot of challenges. And the truth of the matter, my friends, is that standing up for students, teachers, and public schools is what I've always done and what I do best. I stood up for students when I got one-hundred percent on my graduating senior class register to vote, despite the fact that nationwide, two-in-five eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds are not ready to serve to vote. I stood up for students when I organized a walkout at my school after the mass shooting at Markery Silman Delless High School in Parkville, Florida. I stood up for teachers when I was in high school. As many of you know, I split one time growing up between Berkeley Springs, West Virginia, and the Gulf of America in Virginia. When I stood up on the picket lines in the West Virginia teacher's strike my senior year of high school, where we formed the Students for Teachers Coalition in a very abrupt fashion, stood by. Furthermore, I've advocated for our APS students on the School Health Advisory Board, the Early Childhood Advisory Committee, as well as the County School Security Coalition where I work on issues that are. I will advocate in the very same fashion on the school board on priorities like free school meals to address the impending hunger clip. I will advocate for twelve weeks of paid family leave in line with the Democratic agenda to support our teachers. I will advocate for structural change to empower the student choice, such as putting a student representative on the school board, I call a student advocate, in line with all of our neighboring jurisdictions. Arlington stands alone and not all. I think we ought to look at the way first, not last. I'm asking for your vote in this campaign, and it's a simple proposition I'm asking you to accept. It's the idea that if we're to address the most precarious moment for public education in a generation, this generation, or you thought it'd be at the table, I'm asking you to vote for the perspective we need at the table. I'm asking you to vote to bring people together, never divide groups apart. And I'm asking you to vote for the cheese, I said. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, candidates. Let's take a minute, as one of the sounds like the volume is up a little bit better. Remind candidates to speak in support of this on my turn again for our recording audience, who will be able to see this event a little bit later on. I am slightly remiss, but I only acknowledge that someone else in the house, Jenny Diamond, is with us today. Jenny, from New York, thank you for coming. Also, our school employee, neighbor representative, president is with us today. Thank you so much for being here as well. All right, and once again, winners and candidates, two-minute responses and if the need arises, get thirty seconds. First question. So Dr. Duran has both recent update indicated that twenty percent of fifth graders scored below their level on the reading assessment. Additionally, we have students that are struggling at all grade levels post-pandemic. What interventions would you recommend to address these critical learning issues? And we'll start off with Miranda.
Thank you, and we're relating to the question. And I first wanted to say that the twenty percent of fifth graders this year is a various margin to twenty percent of fifth graders last year. Who are showing on the APS dashboard as needing intensive reading support as they were graduating fifth grade and moving on to sixth grade. But those people clearly are still in sixth grade that need support as well. And the reason I know that is because there is a dashboard, academic data out that APS published, and I totally advocate for making public so that trends and naming numbers and anyone who's concerned about this can go and look at the data themselves. So the region understands where we need to target our resources. The dashboard area of us, and the mention is because both by a school or a demographic population and if you have that data, one can see certain schools need a lot more support and certain demographic groups are far behind. There is a lack of Brown students, it is our students with disabilities who are not doing as well currently in reading, and it also extends now. So what would I do about it? I think number one, identify the problem. I give credit to Dr. Duran, most of these people now reset their problem out there. I think that is a changing tone, and I think this is appropriate and well. Because if you don't know where our issue lies, you can't start to solve them. Second, I think we need more regular monitoring. We need to understand what is the response situation with the resource facility. Who started closing these gaps? How much progress should be observed over time? How fast can we move, and what resources can we have in order to move more quickly? So you're not threatening students who functionally deliver it. So with all of that said, I do think there is a need to put budget resources towards interventionists and to give our teachers to support the need to support students who are behind and allow our teachers differentiate more effectively in a classroom setting. We need more budget for interventionists, we need smaller class sizes for our teachers. We generally need to put a big priority on more.
Well, this is a very important question, and as we emerge from this pandemic, we are seeing a lot of loss. We had significant loss of life in 2020 and 2021. A lot of students experienced a lot of trauma in different forms. What we need to recognize first, I think, is the whole student. And the fact of the matter is, I think our students are very highly achieving one area, which is surviving a pandemic. And that ought to be recognized. The truth of the matter is, this, as we go through the current budget process, the superintendent proposed budget as the school board first through their responses and their proposed funding. We are funding more math interventionists, we are funding more supports to address these kinds of loss. I don't think, on my part as a school board candidate, I don't think it's my role to set against every decision. The truth of the matter is, this school board does recognize what's going on with students falling behind. And we do have to continue to persistently focus on opportunity gaps along demographic lines, along socioeconomic lines. I think the superintendent proposed budget moves strongly in that direction, and I strongly support it. And the truth of the matter is specificity in data will result in specificity in solutions. You are seeing data, as Maria alluded to, that indicates where these gaps are along demographic lines. And as we continue to move forward through this current budget process, through future budget processes, we're going to be able to really pinpoint exactly what we need to be fine with. And that's what I suppose well.
This is a good, yes, correct.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, rebuttal, sorry. It's not much rebuttal to follow on. I think Angelo's direct mental health as well as. Correct, said mental health is a problem, and often will stave any ability to learn if they're in a. Struggling, then you need to get that right in order to be able to resolve a pandemic. This year's budget is doing a lot to put more foundation on mental health, and that's important. APS not pockets, that's the thirty-four human issues. This budget will afford, I mean, this insists that we have, by way of a grant, a side.
All right. Thank you so much, folks. All right. Second question, we'll go to you first, Angelo. APS faces a forty-million-dollar funding deficit in the coming years. Maybe three areas where you would oppose cuts and three areas that would be priorities for investment.
Yeah, so I'm aware of the problems we have with balancing the budget. The truth of the matter is, I don't take a scarcity mentality with our public schools, we can and cannot fund. So firstly and foremost, I think the county board can be going more to fund APS. You know, oftentimes, we'll hear described, I believe it's a forty-seven percent split right now, dollars raised in Arlington that go to the public school. Which would sort of imply that forty-seven percent of the budget is going to the public schools. But this is only counting locally raised revenues. When you look at total budget expenditures, it's probably thirty-six percent. And so in that sense, I think that's a little bit of money you can improve on that. So like I said, I'm not going to talk about what I'm gonna hack and cut away. I'm not a fiscal conservative. I'm basically responsible, but we need to be supporting our public students, supporting our students and teachers, particularly as we emerge from this pandemic. And I need our county board and our delegation to Richmond to get creative, particularly as federal support sides for the pandemic, to close these gaps, help us close these gaps. And I will collaborate in that, on where we can make certain spending priorities more sensible and where we can get more funding. Now, it has generally been the disposition of some that the central office and side facts is too many resources compared to in-person or in-class expenditures. And that's where I would look first and foremost to make cuts. And I think there need folks to be a people. Key priorities for me in funding that are inviolable, according to our educates, including step increases. This year, we don't even have a step increase that beats inflation. We gotta do better. We also need the fundamental health supports again as we emerge from this pandemic. And these are things that I would consider to be on subject.
Thank you. Let me start by first saying whatever not, because I think we use this thing to address the budget shortfall. It's turned the dial on classes. Turn it up, and then your budget balances more readily, and your side effects. I will not do that. I still want to prioritize small classes. I also think it's very easy to take teachers. A couple of years ago, we had a current lead, we had a budget environment. I think that those are not the right approaches. What I'm wanting to do, and first, take a look, which we should be doing anyway, at the staff who have directly tied our students, our teachers, our supports, our assistants, our intervention. And do you think that we need to prioritize those folks, go to the side backs, and we want to be looking at administrators to give some beginning in order to make any needed cuts? The second thing is really just as putting this policy that gives additional eighteen days of paid holidays for health-related ways, health-related ways of insurance, general spending. And they are now getting an additional eighteen days, also a work. A B on top of their regular paying, on top of their regular general holidays. The teachers are not getting this work and learning points. It is a little unfair, but it has to have a cost. APS hasn't come to leave yet, but I will look there to see that cost. And it's also being driven very directly in this subject here. Because APS is asking for an additional FTE and our contact with the German office. The other Congress office is where it will work. So you can see that this policy with the holidays is not off accident. Third, and then we need independent audit functions to identify things like the holiday leave policy and other areas, including not using our resources twice. So these are three things, and then I have three more things, which I don't have time for. But I do think that if we should put the APS on bringing a grant writer into APS to draw in additional money through this form from outside sources. Or we have here the outfits, so we can offer that in the FTE. And then typically, and then sort that, buying more resources to be added. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. What are your plans to deal with the medical prices in our schools?
I'm very glad you asked this question. This has been an issue which has come in many ways to dominate this school. I know we all know about the horrible overdose we feel highest. We lost Sergio de Flores in February, this campaign that started. I'm glad to see the way from PTCSA to two days, I think. The truth of the matter is, response to this, again, has to have the specificity of what issue it is. We are dealing with a challenge of mental health. A massively interrelated challenge in substance abuse. So I have a plan, you can find it on my website, youtube.com/subsidiary. To bring on more substance abuse staff. And we have an ability in this area in terms of our budget to really dramatically increase how many substance abuse communities we have. We have a dual pipeline issue as well that needs to be addressed. But I would look to collaborate with my friends in the county board, I have time for them, just said. And the truth of the matter is. Oh, yes. At a recent school board process, we had a substance abuse counselor who told the school board, she has a workload of about twenty-five middle schoolers, every single solitary beef that she sees. Those students cannot be well-served by that, as my friend proceeded to give a quarter of a decade here. And we need to get those caseloads down so that this can be manageable, because clearly we are failing to reach students who are at our offices. So my plan really centers around substance abuse counselors. And that's an appropriate and targeted response to their challenges.
So this is one of the founding issues that are ancient ones. And it's really lived on home, and by the better way, in the past year. But I want to acknowledge first that parents were reading more about this issue before the tragedy that happened. And I think it is important to acknowledge that, but I also think it's important to think about what that means. Parents were reading more about, and we're not getting a great response out of APS. And you think that that's something we need to look at in the same community orientation of the community. And are the second basis to periods in theory, you think it's not always the best. It is important to put out the problems, it's everyone, first things first, to identify what it is, to figure out what's so, and what's their plan, that everyone can be involved in this stuff. So in terms of what they actually do, I think that one thing that is the immediate need is to figure out how to do the rest, using our school, while that was sort of popular in these schools. And they were in this, you know, there is, that one, perhaps, with the back in the streets. And then somebody came on the common schools. There are these several, perhaps, with the back. There are students coming into the school building who are not authorized to be there. They need to go to the chemistry, and the white bag, and the mixing boards. For all the things that are very important, and then learn. Going forward, APS needs to be very, in one, so, mental health, and so, the bodies, you know, in certain. Both of which are very important in that to get us to be this high. And then finally, this is a patch in the stool for the eight or seven, being just about that, how they're getting a program to put a certain, and so the common path leaves the school that they're reading is, characters accessing the areas needed, and they show the support in the class. We're going forward with additional support and touch and collaborating. That's what we're having, is going to help moving along this very, very good.
Thank you so much. All right. Next question to our candidates. Attendance in class had become a big reason. Especially at the high school level. As a teacher, I see firsthand how often students miss class. Attendance cannot be taken into account for grades, and disciplinary consequences are weak. What specific policies would you propose to ensure students are present in class to get the education they deserve?
Thank you for that question. It's really important to hear from teachers who are actually in the classroom and countering these issues. And I think just to say that out front, you know, the school board needs to listen to teachers. And I think that from the bridge in the currents, that APS sometimes tends to not provide the backing platforms for teachers to respond. So I do think it's important to get that effective, and that's something that I would look for more as a school board number. In terms of the actual in-class environment, this is something that actually goes towards the mental health crisis and substance abuse issues that we see if it is in class, where they are supposed to be. If they're not in class, there are just going to be any number of things that we can all agree are not sustainable substance abuse. So I think we need to have a policy, and we need to have consequences in class. And there's some issues that are both available, actually able here, there. And when we approach, we can get a follow-up. First, because they do not ignore the time limits within school, and I think that's a problem within APS. And I also believe that it relates to next, if it starts, it's going to be in schools, it's valuable. They're going to be push around attendance coming out of Dr. Duran's office here in order to remind everyone who is hearing. So there have to be, you ought to be reinforcing, enforcing the consequences on these people when they are seen as a risk.
So I have to, actually, I appreciate this question. I have to look at the specific data to see if there actually is in the data, in the briefs. Very important not to go by any of the, a lot of that. Now, the truth of the matter is, the response influencing, we need to have a measure reliable and enforce responses when this occurs. The reliability and the level of consequence will result in greater compliance. We need to design policies in a way that would be compliant. Well, I think disciplinary background with students who are experiencing great mental health challenges. And challenges that substance abuse. Well, I think that's the appropriate response, whether or not. It's very important that we continue with our sort of justice policies adopted by the school board that is led on. And I would support that. And so a method approach focused specifically on what the problem is and data-driven at its core is what is going to solve this challenge. And I'm a very big fan of evidence-based policymaking. We do not go off of evidence, we go off of points. That's why, as I mentioned, I want to consider that on this subject, to do a better and better response. But I appreciate it, folks.
I have more at the end of the book. Yeah, I remember what he said. So if initially, I mentioned that I think that the policy should compare, and that's very important. The intention that brought that up to me, not in fact, in this big long sentence. The data that is available publicly is out of the. Did that, but in terms of tendency and cutting classes, we need to be monitoring that to make sure that it's clearly applied. And that you're not getting a good crowd history out expressing that the usual acting. Because that is being measured during the sliding.
Okay, next question. You both sound involved regarding public schools. Please give us details of your specific work with our public schools.
Yeah, so I'm not a media teacher before. I sit on the APS School Health Advisory. I'll start there. We worked recently, in particular, for this, you know, we're all, or this advocate. Their current service right now is in a way with the daily policy, the high school system for these citizens. And I actually have to think of what this, we generally, teachers, we don't like to fight with their office. They have given the devices to keep you away from the general identity policy element in those schools. Which, the matter is, as soon as they're over, they're in the greater rights and greater responsibilities that actors have in this, in the classroom. I think there's probably an necessity for a county-wide policy when some votes. I don't think, not identical policies that go around numerous students as granted or administered at the high school level. But that's an issue that this school health advisory board is trying to fix more. I've got a recent issue in the European Childhood Advisory. And I've been poring through the data there. I have, I had come to that advisory committee with a background around college as a childcare provider in Rockville, Montgomery County, up into the pandemic. And finally, I'm doing work right now on the systemic change work group of the County School Security Coalition, working on issues like acceptable access in the public schools, in policies like the free school meals, community eligibility program, which the body administration has been a great expansion on, which really impacts APS, these very positive rates, taking up the number of students I currently do get in this kind of, so that's a same thing with our, with APS.
Thank you. I think this is an important task. I've been in APS ranks in. I've been in ABS ranks since I was a volunteer. My daughter's here in class that then she was through. I've done three pages through elementary, but I'm sort of preventing through South Africa. I was involved in advocating around the community team where I never did the worst school world members try to get fair around the law that would balance and practice to be fair to our school. The minority of the community that had been teaching with us for some time. And still involved, I was Dr. J K, who my daughter is here from very recent time in the care of new person school option. She is now reinvolved, independent best in the hall. And I have two students at the Montessori's of this school. I also am the, I am on the other side of the division today. I'm a member of our public affairs. And I've been advocating for this stream of saving ABS, even with Dr. Ron, advocating in the school board members to meet with county board members, try to start to discuss things where the county and schools can collaborate a little bit more. I've also advocated this stream of surrounding things other than anything, I'm looking at for extended wheel pickup sites because the students in my neighborhood are not able to access mail because they possibly love them or left home alone during virtual working and they're really not in the school. So I have been involved since I was a year. Also been involved in preparing certain spirit. I started to give forward about how we can collaborate with the county or how we can work with the school or the county and building a really
Okay, next question. What can we do to attract and retain high-quality educators in schools like rural elementary? It has a high population of students of color and students with free or reduced funds. Please address the disparity between North and South.
So their question really is nuanced. Their question is really nuanced. There is the recruiting of youth. Then there's the question about demographics, certainly around youth. But if you're doing, don't all share what you do in our community. So I know that, and I know that because they had a rock star principal who now works central office and then a better one that was this type of teacher. And you remember it, four people walking in the room. It's absolutely supporting. We got some of the people working on it through the rise boundaries for a grid and it could be easier. I know other students that know this, you know, like not necessarily experienced in that. I know of teachers, the children that improve that future are top quality. They are a pretty sophisticated mother as the people that we had in Arrow. So I think that it's important to not establish one set of. In terms of the creation, even if you're moving to A M, we need to provide competitive benefits. And I think that the nature is better with us. And we need to bring it to people more often and utilize the teachers who want to come over to share the symptoms and who are asked for the best. In terms of demographics of areas of small youth schools in cities, there are a wide experience between a low school and higher schools and a small population of students. That's our, that's sort of where our people live. And there is a silver bullet, this is important in your adult living, people of boundaries, people not in demographics, having their personal, everybody in our hands, which is really valuable. And they build strong communities and if our minds do that in mind, it's clear. It's also important for us to be the equitable ones. And so we have certain email schools that add more founders where they need more resources, they want to properly direct the resources in that direction.
So this is a very, very good question. Let me start off by being very clear. I will be the most pro-teacher, pro-union school board member APS has ever seen. There is an old adage that I think is on a better focus question, which is folks do not quit jobs, they quit teachers. The truth of the matter is, we need our teachers and their voice to be listened to. I like it when workers speak up. I like it when they're heard. So that's number one. Number two, it is a compensation issue. As we noted this, as I noted, in this proposed budget for the forthcoming fiscal year, we are not beating inflation with the pay raise for different teachers. So it's in effect a paid product. And that's unacceptable. And that will be one of my top priorities in school board. One of the top priority of mine is well, we've got paid family in one of the wealthiest counties in the United States of America. We can afford to fund this for our teachers. And it's right in line with the wider narrative democratic agenda. I will tell you now maybe something about it. I'll tell you how much the cost and I'll tell you how I'll pay. It's not a platitude, it's a plan. I didn't intend to do anything. Now, as it relates to disparities, I think a key priority that we have to have, that I did not get my point of mention actually, is staff diversity. Students feel more supported and more enabled to develop a love for learning when their teachers look like them. And that has to be an absolute priority. And that would be one of my priorities in staff recruitment, to develop that staff diversity. I had a great conversation before I announced my campaign with Emma Neil and Sanchez, former school board member, about throw your own programs. And I'd like to work more in that area on the school board.
All right, next question. The community put a lot of time, energy, and resources in reporting recommendations to move SROs. What is your position on SROs?
This conversation has largely reemerged, resurfaced as a result of the death of Syracuse for the difficult past. Let me be clear. I will be a solid rip wall against any attempt to put SROs back in the schools. I will be unequivocal on this point. The community did have a process, a long and fairly drawn-out process for removing the SROs from the schools. For those who would advocate to put them back, I sure hope we intend to have the same long, thoughtful, judicious process to make that choice. The truth of the matter is, responding to the substance abuse crisis, that would not be an appropriate response. I get if you're someone articulate to me how exactly an SRO, sitting next to the principal's office, would have changed any vaccines situation. That's why I have a plan to bring on more substance abuse counselors to directly respond to the challenges students are facing. Bringing more supports, I bring in more counselors in general to the mental health of students. These students have done incredible things, which is survived the pandemic. And now we are seeing the reverberations of the challenges from that pandemic. We're seeing just recently a horrible report in the CDC detailing spikes in depression and anxiety among particularly young girls. And in order to address these challenges, we need to have the specificity in our solutions of the specificity of the problem. And responding to the luckiest, simplest object available to us is rarely there in this situation. That is my position on the SROs.
The SRO process was so long last time I met this gentleman. And I was in favor of removing SROs then, and I believe we use favor. I am aware, and my perspective probably bothered everybody more is that when she wants, I have a police officer, you have immigrants. And as well, we present, I would not even go to the children's school with a police officer outside of presence. And I'm not comparing that in our schools. All of that said, we need to relax the safety of you in our schools. And not if they're bringing back SROs, students for the correct user at present is also not a possible change at present. The machine here on the police department, or the system that we said, they say at least if you come to the unit, it's worth that capacity. You don't have that any more time. Both of you now are school safety workers. There are our schools now, there is a plan to add more of the technology. But we need a plan for what they are supposed to do and the ability to understand how they're being framed, understand what they are actually doing, and seeing where we need to continue to work on our student security program overall. When we remove SROs, not content, we have a strong plan. And here may have been a bit of a back there. And that's not something that's going to go. We need to ensure security and the benefit of our students in our schools. And then the last thing I'll say on the SRO question is, we do go through a lengthy process. And one of the things that was identified was we thought the SROs, removing them from the schools would help us with some of the distorted impacts we're seeing among our student populations in terms of rate of suspension and other disciplinary actions. We need to continue to track that data. Currently, the ABS advocacy dashboard has published school suspension data, but it is not updated since 2020. We need that data as well to see whether our solution had the intended effects. And if it did not, what else we need to be doing to address different disciplinary actions in schools.
I appreciate my point of mentioning school security coordinators. This was the responsibility SROs have to put these unarmed professionals in their place. And that's what this school board did. And I don't think it's my role as a candidate to second guess everything they do. I do have a slight, slight issue with the superintendent's proposed budget, which is that allocates four times as many school security coordinators as it does substance abuse counselors. I will say once again, if we are going to respond to specific challenges, we must have specific solutions that address those problems. So I support a more even balance. It's about being, either separating new school security coordinators to two substance abuse counselors. I support a more even balance.
All right, next question. What is your understanding of supportive justice? And do you support it for supportive justice in schools?
Yes, this has been one of the great accomplishments of this school board, of my friend Reed Goldstein's tenure as well. APS has led the way in moving us toward policies that reduce harm, that do not perpetuate cycles of violence, cycles of student behavior challenges. And the truth of the matter is, we need to continue doing that. And I favor just the progress that has been made on things like positive behavior interventions towards not filtering students through school prison pipeline of these adversarial criminal justice-style systems. This is progress. And I support that progress, and we need to keep the ball rolling forward.
I had the opportunity this week, so very timely, to sit down with pretty deeply involved in the sort of problems and be able to learn more about how it is being approached. And I am supportive of the efforts in the program. I think it is a little bit more than is often made. It really feeds into community as well, within a classroom, within a school, and getting students invested in their own community so that they are supportive of their own community and so that they are, you know, championing the right things to do and making sure that they are bought into the system. So I think that that aspect of restorative really played very well with our students' mental health and social emotional needs currently. I think also that restorative does have an accountability piece to it, and that's often less talked about. So we're quite to our end concerned potentially about restorative justice being juxtaposed against, you know, more traditional disciplinary style or even the criminal justice system. One thing that maybe we can do going forward is to communicate more clearly about how restorative is played out in ABS schools, what it means and what the accountability approaches are. Because it does, it does involve accountability. And I think that's very important for our students to see the results of their actions and the consequences and to be able to take that in and respond appropriately to that.
We see lots of data about test scores. What are alternative or meaningful measures of student achievement that the school board should consider?
That is a great question, because the answer sits in upon text learned and acceptance. The thing that the academic app board presents, and I'm a big fan of the academic app board, but there is a lot more. One thing that I would love to see in ABS so good times writing, I think that writing is something that has been overlooked recently. And there are surveys that I believe is the English language charts committee within A C T L, the advisory council on teaching and learning, that put out a survey of recent APS high school graduates who have gone on to college. And the results reflected that many of them did not feel well-prepared for college writing. So I think that we should be bringing a stronger focus to writing and trying to put more time and slack back into our classroom. You know, the I B program does this very well. The I B program is at Washington Library and at Jefferson. But we can draw that concept in that for all of our schools. We can even draw concepts that through Career Center in Harlem and Texas. We've already been trying to imagine and design what those schools look like. Is there a, in I B C T program? And all of these things surround bigger with respect to writing, which I think is a more qualitative way to show what you know. And it's also extremely valuable for students to be able to organize their thoughts and present them clearly. I'm a big fan of writing, perhaps I'm biased because I'm a lawyer. But I think that should be a stronger focus. I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, the truth of the matter is standardized test scores are not everything. I think we as Democrats in particular, understand the challenges with the inherent problems on the face of having a disproportionate focus on standardized test scores. I think there are many ways to show, for students to show what they know, to have these pathways to success in education. I actually will add on to my opponent's comments about a greater focus on writing. I think an iterative process and leading in war with these kinds of writing assignments can allow students to show very clearly in their own words with subjects that are particularly interesting and what they know on any given subject. And so I think it's very important to lean away from having too heavy of a focus on what their standardized test scores are, what their S O L scores are. And keeping that balance is very important.
Would you call for an auditor for our public schools?
Yeah, I know this is a big priority of my opponent's. I'm open to the idea. I'd like to hear more from the community about it, hear more from ABS staff about it. I'd like to look more at the information we have available about its benefits, about its drawbacks. I think being judicious in any expenditure, in any allocation of new positions, in any reformatting of current positions is very important. And so I would take a cautious approach to this issue. I won't commit to supporting an independent auditor at this time. I do understand there are some reported benefits of it. And I'd like to keep that conversation going.
That's the answer, which you all predicted. So I want to complement a little bit about why I think it matters. First of all, the county board has an independent auditor. So that is an example right here in Arlington that I think we should mirror it. Second of all, APS had an auditor until very recently. And one of the things the auditor identified was how APS spent its fully federally authorized COVID money. And one of the large expenditures of APS was on a virtual learning program that did not produce very good results and was actually ended midway through the winter. It costs a lot of money. It was over $11 million. And Arlington Public Schools will win out about $18 million out of our COVID relief funds. The independent auditor will report on this. And I think shining a light on that sort of thing is one of the very important things the auditor does. The auditor has seen times because the terms of this employment letter not consistent with best practices according to the new school management standards. So everything that we need to look very hard about what the auditor do and why they are important. I already touched on the holiday issue and then hammer it again. But the reality is, we have a large expenditure on dating and leave, and we have not actively, we have not covered it at all on how much it will cost in the ABS. That can be a function of an auditor as well. So I do very much support the goal. We have an $83 million budget. And it's very important to be using those funds wisely and responsibly and to be able to tell the community, you're doing right with our budget. You're doing right by our teachers. We are sending the money where it should be sent.
What specific measures will you take to improve transparency and communication by our public schools? What specific measures will you take to improve transparency and communication by our public schools and schools?
So recently, Arlington now published a document that was a school document created in January of this year that provides the guidelines around how school members audit and how they audit and use. And one of the things that the accountant said was engagement with the public should be big. I don't agree with that. I would not do that. I'm not a very big person. So I've been doing that for several weeks. So that's fine. I think it's important to be direct to the community or I think it's important to say what you think. Absolutely, it should be a word number. It's not one, more than them. But later in elected official, later you're accountable by being elected. Dr. DeLong is not elected. He is less directed on working public, school members are. The second thing that Dr. DeLong said was, school members should not during this time of uncertainty around that part of the year. You know, they do not talk to your teachers or be able to this. That is another thing that I don't agree with. And I think it's very important to listen to our students. They have a rich vocabulary of what they're asking on the school board. And those who are seeing in time packs, they're going to work very hard. Don't act, because they are not in school setting when they do. It's in the classroom. So I think that listening, there's and perhaps empowering, the teachers have a lot of instruction. A little bit more authority to ensure they're in slot on specific things that affect teachers. Those are things that I would prefer as a student.
So this is a very good question. The truth of the matter is, our current advisory board ecosystem is generally unrepresented in part. So I think mirrors parallels, border, public major process in Arlington. I think we all saw how that county board room got filled up with components of the missing middle issue that were actually dramatically in the minority. The truth of the matter is, I think part of the situation here involves taking recommendations of groups that are unrepresented of the community itself, in the understanding that this is not represented fully. Furthermore, we need to actively, proactively try to be reaching the needs for knowledge. I think APS should fully across the school system immerse by penalizing for instance. And I do also want to respond in my opponent's comments about the, she's talking about the Halloween work document drafted by the current chair of the school board, my friend Reed Goldstein. The truth of the matter is, she got a lot of things right about it. There was also some mischaracterizations. It was a poorly phrased document in a number of ways. And I do want to be clear, I will be the most pro- teacher member of the school board in its history. I'm a big fan of order, speaking up and being heard. The truth of the matter is, some of the comments that were made in that document refer to one board member attempting to speak for the board, spacing cautioning to not do this. When you are talking about the larger issues of the board, make sure you are not students. And another point about that document is the document refers to speaking to teachers. It involves direct and ongoing disputes. In terms of saying those discussions should not have to be referred to appropriate APS staff.
All right, thank you so much. It's been our last. What's, and we had so many great questions today, so thank you everyone. Bro questions, if I did not get to your questions, I do apologize. What specific areas can you see for more collaboration? Downrange, support, students' work demands, have you waiting for us to relate this work on these issues? Or I started my question by collaborating with schools and county board.
So I have great relationships with all of our students working with all of our county board. So I have been a bridge builder. That has been a reputation throughout the years. All the students, teachers, and fellow members of the county. And they like me. I can work with them very well. From day one, in that sense, I've been an effective school board member. All of my bridges are intact. And I have a couple of areas that we've been working with as well. An enormous outside portion of my agenda is about supporting working APS families, much like I was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. And my number one priority in that area is school laws. This is something, this is a legislation that we had carried Richmond by delegate Dan Caron and Mike Wallen. A great piece of legislation killed by Republicans on a party line vote. This is an area where we've seen recently action by the Biden administration. If the community eligibility program is dreadful, down from forty percent of students receiving free resources for qualified access to a per free lunch, twenty five percent greatly expanding the amount of students receiving that without costs. So this is the number one area where we want to have an opportunity for collaboration and we want to find the funding for this. And by the way, due to Biden administration's recent action, that takes the price tag for Arlington down dramatically. Another area we could find for collaboration, supporting our educators. Twelve weeks of paid family leave is a top line priority for the Democratic Party, for the Biden Harris administration, Democrats in Richmond. And we can enact that in Arlington, one of the wealthiest new districts in the nation. And that's an area for collaboration in coming forward as well. And I also believe the crisis in student mental health, probably my third foremost priority. There's a lot of opportunities to work with the county, particularly as perceived limited.
Students, we may encourage the county and schools to collaborate effectively, I hope. The first thing about summer school, I think there is, we're looking to a scant summer school. One of the worst students observed before the pandemic. That alone can be a whole bit concerning to the quality of the performance. So there will be a scant summer school behind the six-year funding. That will be a patience step. Another thing about summer school, that eventually the county, it is bringing that more of the mentioned approach to summer schools. But it's not just the name of it. Public schools, summer school, all of that, from an equity standpoint, we have to offer a really excellent, unmatched competitive, but also enriching of, of alternatives for our students to be able to read with, otherwise wouldn't represent that. Summer school, the eBay, the city DS, or the county. Second thing is literacy. Here we're in the same community called Friends Learning Library. We have an outstanding public library system. These resources are available to assist particularly the students who struggle with reading, who just need someone to read with them. When I was in my first job, it's in Arnold and Moss School, we had a reading room. High employers supported all of us, any concentrate, once a week, once a month, whatever, going into a public school and reading. It's sometimes delicious, we need somebody to read with them. I didn't have any computer training, I just wanted to send time with kids and get them to read. Sometimes that's all it takes. And you have a lot of folks in this community who would go to our libraries, go, you know, other avenues to support our students who need it. Finally, mental health. I'm very strong on support. But I think support is a brain, it brings resources to a bigger problem. The DHS is working on that, and I think that's fantastic. Another example of a community organization that does that is the organization, the support organization for after school initiatives. Very hard aside, they're loaded with your friends, they're loaded with the best end of the page. That they're really trying to make to like maximize certain of those students.
All right, big round of applause. And a big round of applause for our timer today, Paul Ruiz.
Well, we're going to have to be careful that person for whom we are deeply grateful for part of this committee. And you call for your children today.
All right, so without any further ado, we're going to go to closing statements. And the first person who can give their closing statements, we keep the same word.
Thank you all so much for coming out. I am not, I don't think that everything is kind of great. So I would like to give a quick, a few moments. I know what you prepared is all there and I'm on that. So I just want to say, a lot of the stuff I talked about today were issues that I suspect the DHS will be doing better. But that's what it's about. It's about bringing better, people have great public school system. We have public schools in the current room right now, and they're excellent. They just need us to put our all towards spring. We can do things better, and that's what maybe we're not already thinking. But it's important to be as good as we can, because our public schools are about our promise. They're about our promise. They are about the next generation, Arlington students grow up specifically, or like so many people in this room. So we really, really, really need to bring the best to bear on our schools and people around. I'm certainly feeling well turned out. Listen, as you can sometimes the school board has, you know, a little bit of short, shorter attention than the county board basically, and the other very exciting things that are going on this year. So again, thank you. Please remember to vote. It is early. May seventh, May tenth, May thirteenth, very early, in person. May seventeen, May tenth, May thirteenth, in Washington Library. And I have a full two minutes, so I might say it again. May seventh, May tenth, May thirteenth, and I'm asking for your vote to be your next score. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming out this morning, everybody. Really, truly, it's great to see you. My only regret is that I didn't try and get the coffee to bake at this point, but excellent. I, I so appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. It's a very important school board election. We have a choice ahead of us. Two distinct candidates with two distinct visions for our schools. The truth of the matter is, I'm asking you to accept a pretty simple idea of this campaign, that we want to invite this generation of youth to the table when discussing issues affecting the future of this generation of youth. I would not only do that through my own presence on the board, I support structural change for the power of the student voice. I, I also would be remiss if I did not mention my friend, our outgoing school board chair, Reed Goldstein. I want to thank him for his years of service. It's very important, and he understands how important it is. And I think everyone in this room understands how important it is to uphold, defend, and advance the progress of this school board. And I will do that. I'm asking for your vote, May seventh, tenth, and the thirteenth, in case it were not clear already. If you liked what you heard today, I'm asking you to go to AngeloForArlington.com right now to learn more. Sign up to volunteer. Invest your change in the change that's overdue. And I certainly hope to have your support, and I look forward to seeing you all in events to come. Particularly, I'd like to invite you out on the twenty fourth, the Love Run Community Center. The young Democrats will get their turn to ask the candidates questions. Make political punching bags of us, so I invite you to come out, hear what we have to say. And thank you for being here today.